Good morning, everybody. Ken Phelps here with the Daytona Regional Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to Zoom into Excess Issues. A couple of housekeeping items before we get started this morning. Please double check that your microphones are muted and that your cameras are off. And that will help everyone see our speakers and our sponsors as clearly as possible. If you have a question or comment at any time during the session, we're going to ask you to use the chat function to submit those. And if you mouse over your screen, the control panel will pop up. And at the top right, you'll see the more button with the ellipsis. You click that, it'll bring up a drop down menu. And the first option there should be the chat feature. Click that and that will open the chat function and you'll be able to submit your questions. We will be monitoring that and getting to as many of those questions as we can this morning because we've got a great program, I think a lot of good information to be shared. So lastly, on that piece of it, if you miss something today, we are recording today's program and that will be uploaded later today to the Daytona Regional Chamber YouTube channel. And shameless plug, when you go to check that out, please subscribe to our YouTube channel. You'll find not only today's program, but a lot of our previous programs as well for you to check out there. So we are also going to do some polling questions right out of the gate this morning. So for those of you that have been with us for Excess Issues previously, go ahead and get out your cell phones. And if you've already downloaded the Poll Everywhere app, you're welcome to use that part of it or open your smartphone's web browser and go to pollev.com/DRCC right here on the screen. That will get you to the login page for Poll Everywhere. Depending on if you're online or using the app, your screen will look a little bit different. But DRCC is the username, if you're using the app, that will join you to today's presentation. You'll just enter your name. Note, your name will not appear on screen with your answer. Everything is shown in the aggregate, so that will make sure we get good, honest feedback without necessarily calling everybody out. We've got a couple of types of questions today. We have a couple of multiple choice questions. When you see those pop up, you'll just tap on your phone for the answer that is most appropriate in your opinion. We also are going to do a couple of word clouds, which are a pretty neat function of Poll Everywhere. You'll enter a one word response to the question that we put up. And then we'll start to see that populate. And as answers are repeated, those words will grow bigger. So it'll be fascinating to see what you are all thinking this morning. So with that, once you get to this screen, we should be ready to go. And we've got our questions right out of the gate. So we hope you'll join us and participate with this. So the first question is, what are the major roads that need attention in Volusia County? And for those of you logging into the web browser, the website is www.pollev.com. P-O-L-L-E-V dot com. And the username is DRCC. So go ahead and put your responses in. And this will be the word cloud. You'll start to see those responses come up. Seems like LPGA has been mentioned multiple times thus far. Williamson, Dunlap, and Ridgewood. Yeah, some of the key arteries in our community for certain. Very interesting, very interesting, but not surprising. I think most of us are aware of that. All right, very good. Well, we're going to move on to the next question. Once you get logged in, DRCC is the username for this. We're going to move on to question number two. And if you're just getting on, you should still be able to put something in for the first question as well. Let's get over here. All right, our second question, and this is one of the multiple choice questions. What do you see as Volusia's main economic challenge in 2021? Help businesses endure and recover from the pandemic. Revive tourism, helping employers cope with Florida's new minimum wage requirements. The new law requiring use of e-Verify or finding skilled and qualified employees. Workforce is always an issue. And not surprising, I think, with our top two responses there and obviously very closely related. Very good. All right, we'll move on to the next question so we can get through these and get to our program. What is your business outlook in 2021? So are you optimistic for improvement? Are we headed in the right direction and going to maintain status for a while or concerned about further struggles? Very good. Well, I think that's a great outlook for us to have. And I think in some of the conversations I've had recently, that matches that. I think people are expecting, once we're able to get the pandemic a little bit better handle on that with vaccines out and getting towards back in business safely. Expect a nice, strong recovery. So very good. Glad you're all optimistic. We share that optimism here at the chamber. All right, the last question, another word cloud. What is the most important leadership characteristic you would like to see from the members of our county council? Remember, one word answer. If you put two words in, it'll show up as two different words. So one word answer on that. And the website for those of you who may just be getting connected is P-O-L-L-E-V as in Victor, dot com. So two L's, Anna. And then the username is DRCC. Let me go back one here. There we go. Respect being a repeated answer because it's a little bit larger than the others. But transparency, accountability, communications, consensus, integrity. I think those would be characteristics for any good leader, quite honestly, but certainly for our folks on county council. All right, very good. Well, thank you all for participating. For those of you, if you're just getting logged in, you should still be able to work through those questions and we'll be sharing some of the responses with our participants later. So we have an idea of what the responses were. I'm sure they're looking for your feedback as well. So with that, we'll move on to getting the program started. It's my pleasure to introduce our MC for the morning and for throughout the coming year as first go around as the sitting in this new role as our 2021 Chairman of the Board. Please welcome Lynn Marinaccio from Beaumont Construction. Lynn, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Ken. Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us for today's virtual Eggs and Issues program. Today, we have the pleasure of hearing from our new county chair, Jeff Brower. Volusia County's economy has been through a difficult 2020, as we all know, but we look forward to a better 2021. Major means of support was the county's small business grant program operated by their Economic Development Division. But the county will be looking to address numerous other issues, not the least of which will be their budget, infrastructure, job creation, tourism, working with the cities, as well as other issues. At this time, before we get started, I'd like to recognize our special guests online with us this morning. County Council members Billy Wheeler, Heather Post, Barb Gertman, I'm sorry, Barb Gertman, Danny Robbins, our Volusia election supervisor Lisa Lewis, and Ormond Beach City Manager Joyce Shanahan. Welcome to all these officials and thank you so much for joining us this morning. Did I miss any other elected officials or staff representatives that would like to say hello at this time?
Councilman Fred Lowery is here.
Thank you, Councilman Lowery, and welcome. For our sponsor recognitions this morning, we have many generous members who go above and beyond to bring us relevant and meaningful programs to our members in the community. Our presenting sponsor this morning, Halifax Health, please welcome John Guthrie.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, so you guys know I like to tell stories. So I'm not putting my picture up yet, but when you see it, you'll understand. So we've talked about nine months about the vaccine and how cold it has to be and how life-saving it's going to be and how amazing it's going to be. So I have the newspaper and everybody calling me the TV. It's saying, when the vaccine arrives, we want to videotape it so we can show everybody. And I'm thinking, you know, dry ice, steam, special cart, everything. So I get a call from the pharmacy and they said, the vaccine's here. And I said, well, I'm going to come down and take a picture of it. And if you look right there, can you see it? That is, I don't know if it showed up, did it show up, Ken?
It did, yes.
You're muted now, John.
And it's a wonderful thing, but it was really disappointing just from a theater of the mind standpoint because I thought this was going to be a momentous media. But I'm just listening to this about vaccines, workers, first responders, and people over 65. We do not have any vaccine right now, but I'm very pleased to see that Publix is jumping in the game because to put it in perspective, you have two different vaccines that need two different days. And there are 170,000 seniors, just seniors, in Volusia County. So we have a lot of work to do and it's going to take a lot of effort from a lot of different organizations. Today at Halifax Health, we have 42 patients with COVID. And so that's definitely an increase. However, the big question everyone asks, you know, do you have ICU beds? Do you have this? Do you have that? We are so lucky to have the health system we have here because we are not overrun. We're able to take care of everybody and that's our premise. So that's my update. We appreciate being part of this and congratulations, Jim Cameron.
Thanks, John, and thanks for everything that you guys over at Halifax Health do. And thanks for that update. Our next sponsor with the Daytona Beach News Journal, please welcome Diane Park.
Good morning, everyone. I'm actually with the advertising department of the News Journal, but that also includes, as you know, we've grown rapidly over the last couple of years. So I'm also Gannett on USA Today and I'm Local IQ, one of the largest Google providers in the country. One of the things that we're priding ourselves is our ability to help, you know, businesses like Halifax Health get this valuable information out to our community and make sure people are able to educate themselves and progress through these challenging times as best as possible. In terms of businesses, as we've grown as a company, we're able to offer tools and services for our local businesses so that they can help maintain and grow their businesses throughout the year, regardless of what we're facing. Some of the things that we offer through our Local IQ arm is a tool. We have an Ultimate Marketing 2021 Marketing and Planning Guide. What that tool is to do is to help you understand how important making decisions and taking actions on your own media and planning can be. We offer tools like this free of charge. Throughout the year, we also offer free of charge seminars to our local businesses. We want to help be part of the community and help business grow. Over and above that, part of our job as a media company is helping us celebrate events, national, local, and regional. So one of the things that we're doing in February is, as USA Today, we have a USA Today ad meter. The website is admeter.usatoday.com. What this is going to be is during live time, if you want to watch the football and you want to vote nationally on your favorite TV commercial, you can be part of, wow, what, you know, what's the fun thing going on with the commercials for the Super Bowl? Because after all, half of us watch the football game for the advertisements. I'm sorry, following up, John, with the vaccine information seems like such a small, I feel so small compared to such valuable information. But we're growing and changing and trying to help the community through these challenging times as well. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Diane, and thanks so much to the News Journal as well for sponsoring this program this morning. Just a reminder, before we get to our main presentation for questions from the audience, if you could ask those in the chat room and then we'll get to as many as we can at the end of the presentation. So with that said, it's my great pleasure this morning to welcome Jeff Brower, our new county council chair. A former captain with Volusia County Life Guards, Mr. Brower graduated from Mainland High School, attended Daytona Beach Community College, earned a bachelor's degree in science and agriculture from the University of Florida, Go Gators. He was elected as the leader of the Horticulture College at UF and the Student Division of the Florida Nurserymen's and Growers Association. After graduation, he has worked as a nursery manager, sales and marketing manager, and has owned and operated a landscape design build company. His family operates a direct to consumer farm and is a soil consultant. He also serves on the Volusia County Soil and Water Conservation Board. Mr. Brower lives in Leon Springs with his wife, Terry. He's the father of nine children, two of whom are active duty military. And he was elected as church elder at 33. Please join me in welcoming our new county council chair, Jeff Brower.
Well, good morning. How is the audio?
It's great. You sound great, Jeff.
All right, very good. I'm sorry we don't have video this morning. We may get that corrected as we go along here. I really appreciate the invitation. I look forward to meeting with the chamber throughout the year. In fact, this morning, I'm going to make a request of the chamber on a couple of different items as we go along. We don't have a lot of time, so I want to speak specifically, really just about three different things, three different goals, but the last goal really encompasses everything that we need to do in Volusia County. But it all, let's start with number one because it's all going to stem from conquering the COVID-19 virus. We have to open up our economy and keep it open. In Florida, we've had more opportunity to do that than in other states. So we've got to be proactive in stopping the virus. The county will continue its education of social distancing, mask wearing, washing your hands. I'm hoping that we can also add some other medical related issues that doctors could share with individuals to stay healthy, even as far as taking vitamin C, taking zinc, you know, vitamin A and D. Everybody wants to know what they can do. And that is nowhere more apparent than in the response to the vaccinations that have already taken place, those that are available. We've had 312,000 visits to Eventbrite. This week, we had 500 vaccines available. People went in yesterday to sign up for that through Eventbrite. We also have a telephone, but when you have hundreds of thousands of people all coming in, all poised and ready to click at 9:00 AM, it's frustrating, it's discouraging, it overwhelms the system. And the issue is that the demand is incredibly high and the supply is incredibly low. And but we have to keep in mind what's happening. We have a vaccine available in never seen before record time in less than a year. Here's a vaccine on the market, but it's being produced as we need it. And it's not just being produced for Volusia County, but for the entire world. And Florida gets some of that, the United States gets some of it. They divided amongst 50 states, comes to Florida, then is divided amongst 67 counties. So this week, we're optimistic and we're being very careful with the information that we put out about where vaccine will be available because, again, because the frustration level is so high. People are just fearful, so we don't want to give false information or false hope. But we're waiting today and tomorrow to hear from the governor what our weekly allocation will be. And we're being told that that will be steady now. So we hope it's a really big one. I've asked the governor for consideration and asked him, what can we do to get in more? Is there anything we can do at the county level? We have a system in place. We've already selected sites. We have the pre-registration system because a walk-up system is just, it doesn't work. I actually have a son in the National Guard that is all over the state of Florida. His job was to help get vaccine from the storage cooling facilities to where it's needed. He's actually been moved to crowd control. And he said, it doesn't matter if it's been an appointment based system or a non-appointment based system. People just show up when they know where it is because of the fear level, because of the, you know, they want the vaccine. We need to get the vaccine done. So we have the system in place. We're hoping this week to hear what the allocation is. The really good news this week, and it's already been mentioned, is that Publix will now have the vaccine. They've had a little bit and of course it disappeared. And they actually took the locations down off of the Publix website. It'll go back up. We're being told that there'll be 22 public supermarkets in the county that will have the vaccine. That will be a tremendous help. So anyway, you know, I'm spending a lot of time on that, but it's the most important thing that we have to deal with right now. I can, I bet I can speak for every council member that's on here. My phone, my email, text message just blow up every day with questions about it, with complaints about the system. And it's just, it's like a fire hose trying to fill up, you know, a tiny cup. There's just not enough vaccine. And so we're hopeful that it'll be produced more rapidly. There's more manufacturers coming online and going through the testing procedure. It will get better. We just have to ask everybody to be patient. But it is the most important thing that we face right now. And in the midst of that, you know, business has to go on. And like I said at the beginning of this, we have to keep the economy open because besides the increasing infection rate, death rate, there's also an infection rate that's associated with businesses. With businesses, we've got good, long-term local businesses here that are closed that will never come back, restaurant businesses, gyms, bars, and it's just, it's people that have invested their lifetime. So we have to do everything that we can to open safely. We are trying to set the example in the county. We require masks in the county buildings. We are highly suggesting to the public that we have, that everybody wear masks when they're indoors, that you social distance, that you wash up. We'll continue to do that. So let's move on to the other two things that I'm really focused on working on. It stems out of the campaign, what I told voters, and they responded very positively. I'm going to keep my word. So number two would be to protect our environment, our rivers, lakes, streams, green areas. Everything that the county council does, I want to see a relationship to keeping that goal. Sure that we don't have consequences. The, but I'll talk more about that as I get to the main point, which is number three, which is build our local economy. That should be the focus of the county council this year. COVID has set us back, you know, tax receipts for the county are down. Gas tax receipts are down, so money is going to be an issue. We have to focus like a laser beam on building our local economy. And that makes the chambers extremely valuable. I want to work with each different municipality in helping them to build, even though we're one cohesive county, we have an opportunity here with five different districts, 16 different municipalities to have just inviting and even spectacular specialties that each area, it could be DeBary with the River City, Deland with the downtown market special events and they're growing local businesses at the airport and other areas. Daytona Beach with beachside rebirth, maybe in our district, New Smyrna Beach with the great Flagler Avenue attractions to locals and tourists, business attraction. You know, I'm not going to dictate to them what they focus on. I just want to help them. I'll participate in community events and meetings with them. But let's have each of our major cities have an attraction, both for business and for visitors and for locals. Let's not leave out our locals because there's a lot of people that aren't traveling right now. Here's my first ask to the chamber and hopefully somebody will get back to me on this. I would like to see each of our major cities have a thriving downtown. That starts with one major intersection that we focus on that intersection and move out. That doesn't come from me. That's not a man that just thought this up. There, that is a proven tactic. I traveled to Pensacola, Florida to visit the, there was a contest last year in 2020 of the best, the strongest town in America. Where Deland had the best downtown. But the strongest town was won by Pensacola. It was, even though there's a military base here, it was a dying community. And they rebuilt, not from government. In fact, they had to drag government kicking and screaming. It came from the business community. It came from people that just love their community and said, why don't we invest in this? So they picked a downtown. And here's, to keep this short, here's what I want to ask the chambers, if they would assist me with. I went up to Pensacola and met with the people that did this. And they eventually did work with local government. And now, of course, it's successful, so local government has jumped on it. I want the government to lead the way here with our business community, with our chambers. Quint Studer lives in Pensacola, Florida. He's an amazing man, author of, I think, 17 different books. I want to ask every chamber member, when we're done this meeting this morning, to go buy, however you buy books, Buy Building a Vibrant Community. It's by Quint Studer, Q-U-I-N-T-S-T-U-D-E-R, Quint Studer, Building a Vibrant Community. And I would like to ask you to join me in inviting Quint to our community through a Zoom meeting. He doesn't have to leave Pensacola with some kind of a community event because he will inspire local business leaders. He will inspire the good people that live here that do want to invest in our community, that are investing in our community. It will inspire our smaller community. So that's my first ask. I hope you keep that in mind. The second thing, you know, working with cities, building vibrant communities, is let's make our county a destination. Even in COVID, I met with the three advertising agencies this week and I was greatly encouraged. The women that I met with have vision and I just love their ideas. And we're right on track with that. Even in COVID, Volusia County should be the outdoor capital of Florida. Maybe the outdoor capital of the United States, especially in the wintertime. We have beautiful beaches. We've got the St. John's River all the springs. We've got Tiger Bay, the loop, parks where you can hike, ride, even take four wheels off. I've got a park right across the street from my home. It's 1,000 acres donated by the Strong family. And we use it for horseback riding. There's also a section for four wheelers. There's also a section for hiking. Everybody says, you can't mix those up. It doesn't work. It works beautifully. You go out there, you never see a piece of trash on the ground because we all police ourselves or working together. And we ride there weekly on horses, never had an issue with anybody else. So we can do that. We can work together. So I'd like to be less afraid of opening those outdoor opportunities up. And let's promote that. Let's promote, you know, for Bike Weeks, for our other special events that we're known for, that you don't have to be crowded into one area. We should be advertising this to the world. We can be spread out all over this county into beautiful outdoor venues. Outdoor venues. So, and then. Number two under that is. If, if we're going to make our county a destination, let's beautify our streets and roads. I'm not talking about massive multimillion dollar projects. Let's, let's, let's do some incremental things. Let's try different things that, that don't break the bank and find what, what works. We know is, if we look at Pensacola, we'll look at the other cities that were, that participated in this, this strong town. Contest. The things that really attracted. Businesses to invest and, and you can. You can all picture right now, areas of our county where we need investment. Think East ISB. Think Main Street. Think every downtown, uh, every municipality here. Simple things like planting street trees, actually having trash cans available, actually having. Benches for people to, to sit on with, with wide sidewalks, with. Things that we don't, didn't used to think about that we have to think about now. If we're going to attract. Uh, young workers, young professionals. They don't want to jump in the car all the time. They want a bike lane. They want pedestrian lanes. We have to build for that future. Bus stations that actually have a cover over them instead of just a pole and, and maybe a trash can. Let's get sponsors and, and build, uh, build some, some covers for the rain and the hot Florida sun because part of. Of, uh, making our county a destination and it's, it's going to be the last thing that I talk about in, in this section. It's making us a business destination. Our business community wants to know that we have a workforce. That's available, that's well qualified, that's well trained and can get to work. So, um, and I, I will talk more about that in, in a minute, but. Let's, let's begin. Each community. Incrementally trying new things and, and, uh, it, it could be a fun inter-community contest. The, the next thing I'd say is. If, if we're going to have a county that's a destination, we'd need to have water that we can drink. We need to have clean water. And green spaces, not just a concrete jungle. We have one of the most beautiful counties in Florida. Look, look at the, the Saint John's River area, the, the Loop and, and North Ormond Beach and all the way up to the county line. It's world famous. People from all over Florida come here. We need to be focused on that and protecting it. The Indian River Lagoon, an absolutely beautiful water sys. System. We need to be. Taking care of those, uh, those areas and that's going to be a, a priority for me. And I believe it'll be a priority for the entire, um, council.
Excuse me, had to get a drink.
Let's promote what we have here that, that works. Uh, one of the number one things that worked in, in. Pensacola, Florida was they started a, 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 a baseball team and build a stadium. We already have that at City Island. Let's capitalize on our sports, our culture event and racing. We are, we're the world headquarters of racing. We're blessed to have the Speedway here and. And all the focus that NASCAR and, and the Speedway personnel put into our community. Let's reach out to the community. And bring them in. At the end of this Covid nineteen. I think one of the chief concerns of the Speedway is, uh, how will it recover? Will people, um, trust us to, to come back? Yes, we have the tremendous infield. We have the stands that we can social distance even before we get to the end of this. Let's let our local. Race fans, which there is a plethora of. Make them welcome, invite them in. People from around the state. We have to promote racing. We, and, and I'm. I'm going to continue to talk with the, with the Speedway about using that venue for, for other community events, outdoor events. It's safe. People will come to outdoor events more than they'll be packed into a, a large. A large facility where we're all packed in like sardines. So. Next, we, we're the home of the world's most famous beach, made famous by the world's most famous Speedway. We've got the world's most famous beach and, and the boardwalk. We need to focus on, on that. We need to, to beautify it. And I'm sure I'll get questions on this. We need to open our beach up so that it's. User friendly again. I have, I, I, I get. I get weekly calls from business owners from the Main Street area, from East ISB. They're begging for help and they are convinced that. Well, they know, they can look at their figures that business went down, businesses were lost when we closed that section of beach, the boardwalk died. Let's try and experiment. Let's just open up that small area and see how it, uh, revives. Business for those businesses there, how it, how it, uh, revives foot traffic and, and parking on the beach and brings people there. You know, I, I have no intention of forcing that on, on Ormond Beach or some other. Business that, or some other community that, that doesn't want to open up their, their closed beaches. Let's have a, let's have a comparison. They can keep their areas closed. Let's open ours and compare how it, how it worked. For businesses and, and then the voters will, will decide. But we've got to, to focus on it. And then right along with that, um, lodging opportunities to, to make our. Our, uh, community a destination. We have beautiful motels and hu- and hotels with, from all different, uh. Price levels. That's a benefit. We need to, we need to, um, uh, promote that. But then we also have, uh, uh, short-term rentals available. You know, many people prefer that. Out of safety, especially in Covid nineteen, they can take their family there. There's not a, a masses of people. We should be promoting short-term rentals and, and making it possible in, in. In Ormond Beach and Ormond by the Sea and Daytona Beach and, and. Down in Bethune Beach where people have invested their life savings to build homes that they live in and rent out. They, they have calculated. Their mortgage by being able to rent out because it's been done for, for thirty years here. And suddenly they can't do it. People are losing their homes, but we're also losing another opportunity. To bring people in with short-term rentals. B and Bs, um, camping, we can, we have camping. We should add more camping, not, not government, but, uh, private entities. So. Again, let's just, let's promote all the things that make Volusia County great. And then. This is what I'll, I'll close with. Let's make our county. The business destination of, of the, of Florida. Heck, let's make it the business destination of the Southeast. We've, we've focused for a long time in economic development of providing, um, incentives. Where we, we might offer buildings, land, tax, tax abates, abatements. I want to see us, in fact, I, I ran on this. I think everybody listening to this probably knows it. I, you probably heard me say, I want to stop. Corporate welfare. Um, I want incentives to bring business here. I want incentives that affect, that are incentive to every Volusia County resident. And, and the incentives should be all the things that I had mentioned, beautifying our county. Pouring, pouring our heart and soul into our areas, being, keeping low taxes, not raising taxes. How does, we've, we've proven. Multiple presidents from, from. For, for generations have, have proven from, from Kennedy all the way up to, uh, to President Trump last, last year, President Reagan. When you lower taxes, tax receipts actually increase. So. Let's work on lowering our taxes, keeping taxes low where they are low. Not creating more poverty by, by raising taxes. And then let's promote our well-trained employee pool and let's make sure we have a well-trained employee, employee pool. I would like to work with the school board to get vocational training. Back in schools because everybody's not going to go to college. Everybody's not college material. Everybody doesn't need to go to college. We should be teaching trades and, and vocational things. We should really be, be promoting, uh. All the different, uh, mathematics for, for the twenty-first century. We have great universities here that we can, uh, we can work with and deal with and, and promote. So. And recruit from. For, uh, for an employee pool. Affordable housing. We need, one of the things that companies look at i- if they're considering moving here. Is affordable housing. Can, can, can a workforce, uh, afford to live here? I would like to promote and, and work with the cities, and I know this is controversial, of allowing. Homeowners to construct, uh, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, to convert a, a garage to an apartment, to build a mother-in-law suite in the backyard. Instead of building massive, uh, projects where we house people. Let's intersperse people in our community where a young couple just starting out. A, a black couple with their first child can, can, uh, rent one of these affordable, uh, accessory dwelling units. In a middle-class neighborhood and walk that, the streets, pushing their baby carriage, meeting the people in that community, hearing. Uh, stories of success from the old timers that, that live there, meeting younger people. Let's help families get started and, and at the same time, our older population. Think about all the homes in Ormond by the Sea where, where, where there's an older population that could, could, uh, rent out, uh, a mother-in-law suite or a. A garage apartment. Help them keep their home and help a new family get started. We need, I would also like to see the inclusion of more multifamily housing. Well done, tastefully done in, in, um. In, in our neighborhoods. We have to be careful. We don't want to destroy, um, the neighbor in, in neighborhood, but it can be regulated. It's done. That's one of the reasons I want to be Pens- bring Pensacola, Florida here for, for, uh, Volusia County to look at. They're doing that and it's, and it's working. One of the things that we could do is with every change that, that is offered in, for a comp plan or, or zoning. And, and I understand that sometimes that needs to be done because government by far doesn't get everything right. But, but when, when we give those, it's a negotiation. Let's ask the people asking for that. That change to, to, uh, to help mitigate our, um. Our community by, and by mitigation, I mean. Invest in a neighborhood that's rundown, invest in, in street plantings, repairing sidewalks, restoring, uh. Lighting, whatever needs to be done, even. Reviving areas that, that can be rebuilt, building new homes. So. Uh, I, I see that I'm, I'm running out of time here. I, I want to work with, with local developers to, um, to infill and to thicken. From, from the beach. In fact, I've talked to, to local developers and builders that have said, I'll, I'll help you. In, in reviving the beach to, to, uh, US one, maybe to Nova Road. With, with, uh, infill and, and, and building in the, in areas where we can. Fill in vacant lots and, and, and beautify. There's parts of our community that just, that are embarrassing. You get, go over the bridge at East ISB. And drive to the, to the beach. I, it's embarrassing. It looks like Little Beirut. We have to focus on, on that. So. Again, I, I touched on, on Votran and I'll, I'll say this, two more things real quick. Sunrail's coming up, ten million dollars to build a couple miles of track to, to Deland. I think that's a horrible investment. I would like to see us take that money and, and invest it in. In Votran so that people can get back and forth to work where we're taking care of our own citizens and focus that money in, in our own infrastructure. Lastly, let's make. A, a one-stop. Business development shop for Volusia County where we work together with our local communities. And a business can, comes in here and we roll out the red carpet for them. We can tell them the permits, the fees, requirements, the zoning. Everything that they need to go so they're not bouncing around from one, um, government entity to another. Let's make them welcome here. Let's make our own businesses here. Welcome. Let's have employee, um, fairs to help them find, uh, employees. Let's even give them location help. This is the kind of business you want. We'll help you find the area where that would best be suited. Roll out the red carpet. Recruit, uh, graduating entrepreneurs from, uh, Bethune-Cookman University and Daytona State and Embry-Riddle. We're blessed with, with, with these. Institutes of higher learning. And then let's focus on our business incubators. And to, to help local businesses. And here's my last ask and, and I'll end with this and, and turn it back over to you. Another community event. You've heard me talk probably during the, um, campaign about economic gardening. Everybody thinks I met. I made that up because I'm, I'm a landscaper and I love the environment like all of you do. No, Economic Gardening is a national program for economic development. It was started by Chris Gibbons. And, um, I've talked to Chris, but I've, we've, I, I've listened to him for hours. You can, you can actually go online to economicgardening.org and download a, a free, the whole program for free. You will be thrilled. You'll be amazed. You'll, I, I think you will fall in love with it because it focuses. On our local entrepreneurs to help them build their business. These, these second-tier companies, first-tier companies, the mom and pops, the restaurants. All of those are important, but we need to bring in outside money from, from outside of our pool to raise the level of order in, in our own pool. The. The way to do that is to not just focus on commodities, but to focus on innovation. Things that, that we sell, um, that we create here in Volusia, sell outside of the community, bring new money in. And, and that's what this focuses on. Level-two companies, companies that have. Ten to ninety-nine employees, a million dollars to fifty million dollars a year. That's what this program focuses on. I think you'll love it. So let's, my, my clarion call. Every time I meet with the county council is going to be. Let's make sure that what we do builds our, our local economy and helps our local citizens and our local businesses. Let's build the businesses that are here. And, and when they see those, when the rest of the world sees those businesses doing well and how easy it is to do business here. We will build confidence in other companies that want to come here and be part of our community. And we can pick and choose instead of having to pay them, provide them, they're all the infrastructure at our expense. We need, we need to stop. We don't have the money. We can't afford it, but we can attract new businesses by being smart. And taking a different approach. So. Thank you. With that, I'll be glad to open it up, throw it back to you.
Great. Thanks so much, Jeff. Thanks for taking the time this morning to, um, give us a chance to know you and, and, and listen to, to your priorities. Uh, at, at this point, we'll, we'll get into some question and answers and, and for the audience, there's still. There's still time for you to throw some questions up there on the chat section and we'll get to as many of them as we can before we, uh, we run out of time today. Jeff, I'm going to just kind of start it off my, myself if, if you don't mind. I'm a lifelong resident of the community, went to, you know, grammar school and high school here. Uh, I love the beaches. I, I, I love the part where I could take my little kids and there's no traffic. I love the part where I can drive my Jeep and, and, you know, drive up and down and kind of cruise the place. Supported all the, you know, the Echo projects and just love the, the quality of life that we have here and, and all those things that the environment provides. But on the other hand, I'm, I'm in the construction business and a significant portion of our workforce depends on construction jobs. You know, to put food on, on their table. So I guess my question is, how do you balance in your mind your, two of your three priorities? One, protecting the environment and the other, um, growing the economy?
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's an easy balance. I, I don't know of many, uh, builders or developers that are. That purposely want to, um. Destroy the environment or, or harm the environment. I think, I think we just need to promote responsible growth. That there's some areas that we shouldn't make a comp, uh, land. Change happen. There's some areas that we shouldn't change zoning in order to protect our quality of life and, and the environment. We shouldn't be. Draining, dredging, filling in and paving over the wetlands that are critical. There are kidneys for our water to, um. To keep our water clean. The, and, and there is a balance there. There has to be a, a balance there where. We, we don't say, um, uh, no development anywhere, but we do development. That's beneficial to our environment, preserves our environment, increases our quality of life. And I think even more specifically. I'm really, I'm asking that we, that you as, as a builder, help me focus on our core areas. That, that are empty, that are depleted, that are, uh, there, there's a new project coming up on, on, on East ISB by, by Dr. Duvie that's. there, there's a new project coming up on, on, on East ISB by, by Dr. Duvah that's going to be amazing. And I think it will inspire that area. Let's, let's construct in those areas that are just, that are ripe for development that will help our locals and attract new people in and, and attract visitors and tourists as well. So, you, I think you answered the question with, with balance. There just has to be a balance and that we don't, we don't jump prematurely and, and approve construction in an area where it should have, never have incurred.
Okay. Oh, that, that's great. I, I actually, I, I love to hear that. Anything that I can do personally as we leave the chamber to, to work with you on those kind of priorities, we're happy to do so. So I, I look forward to meeting you in person one of these days. Move on to the, the, the next question. What role do you see the Volusia Elected Officials Roundtable playing in addressing city and county issues in the future?
Critical for, for all the reasons that I said in, in my last point that, and even the beginning, that I want to work with each community and helping them better develop their strengths and, and their priorities and what they want to be known for. I, I'm really looking forward to, to that and, and to working with each community. I, I plan on going to every one of the city councils. My wife is wondering if she's ever going to see me again, so I'll bring her with me. And we, we can go to city council meetings and, and, and hear from the people that live there. And I'm, in fact, I've got, I, I've got several already on my, on my calendar. So I, I think the, the roundtable of elected officials is, is worthwhile. And, and, and this year to climb out of COVID has never been more important.
And what would you say is your biggest personal challenge in your new leadership role as our county chair?
Well, that's an easy question right now. It's, you talk about being baptized by fire and I bet I'll see Billy and who else do I see up here? Heather, Danny nod their head in just a second, but it, it's, it's COVID. It's trying to get information to people that, that are 78 to 99 years old, that are scared to death, that are getting on the phone, going on the internet, maybe for the first time in years, to stand in line. They're there at nine o'clock trying to get an appointment. And, and they get a message that says, you know, you've got two appointments. And then 20 minutes later, it says that they're all filled. There's no hanky panky going on there. There's 300,000 people trying to get 500 spots. It overwhelms the system. So we are working hard. Trust me, that the county is, was, our county staff was way ahead on this. And so I'm asking the cities, don't go rogue. Don't go by yourself. Work with the counties with the plans that we have, the sites that we have. But, you know, we're, we're getting 1,900 vaccines available a week. Last week it was 500. So that's my biggest challenge right now. I want people to get vaccinated. I want people to feel safe. I want them, you know, to, to trust government. We have to restore trust in, in government. So integrity is everything. None of us, none of the county council members want to give any false information. So today, we're waiting on the governor with, hopefully with, with good news. He's going to tell us what our allocation is and then we're going to ask him for more. So right now, that's, that's my biggest challenge is, is COVID-19.
Okay. And I think we probably have time for, for one more. You may have touched on, on this in some of your previous comments, but thoughts on building economic development successes?
Well, yeah, I think that's, that's most of, of, of what I've talked about. That's why I want to bring in the Chris Gibbons with his economic gardening and, and Quint Studer from Pensacola that can share with us some, some of their ideas. So everybody doesn't think it's just coming from me. But one of the things that I will ask the community to look out right now is again, what Dr. Duvah's getting ready to do on, on East ISB, one of the worst stretches of, of highway in Volusia County. It's the, it's the gateway to our beach and it's embarrassing. And he's taking old buildings and it's going to, some of them he's going to remove and, and build new. Some of them he's going to restore, but with a beautiful Volusia County beachside theme of, of, of capitalizing on, on our strength. It's going to be beautiful. It's going to attract new customers and, and new visitors. It's going to be a place for locals to go. So I think we, we need to capitalize on, on that and look at it and say, look, here's a start. Here's the seed. There's confidence in this area. Come on in and, and let's have more, more development there. And let's build that area back up. So we look at what he did out on, on LPGA whenever, with the office complex that he built and everybody said it wouldn't work. It's beautiful. It's thriving. Let's, let's, we've got some tremendous community leaders that have been successful, are successful. Let's look at what they did and see how they did it and, and, and hold them up in the community and inspire other, other new entrepreneurs and, and local leaders.
Well, that's a, that's a great thought. And Nancy, if you could maybe offline set something up with, with us, with, with Jeff and Dr. Duvah. You know, the East ISB has been a huge priority of this chamber for, for many years now. We were out in front getting that thing going. And, and we've been pushing and pushing and pushing to, to get it to completion. So it, it's obviously near and dear to our hearts and I, I'd love to work with, with whomever to try and make that happen just as quickly as possible. So we'll, we'll definitely make that happen. Thank you so much for, for, for doing this today and for presenting to us. I think that everybody got a chance to, to know you a little bit better and that, that's so important in a, in what really still is a small community that, that we all, that we all love. So I guess turn it back over to, to Nancy Kiefer for, for closing remarks.
Thank you very much, Len. First of all, congratulations on your new role as our chairman. We really look forward to your leadership in 2021. Jeff, thank you for, for your time. So early on in your, your new leadership role, your access to the business community through the chamber is very much appreciated. I will tell you that shortly after Jeff was elected, Jim and I sat for what was going to be a one-hour meeting that ended up to be a two-hour meeting on his birthday. So we appreciate your, your willingness to talk to all of us here at the chamber and, and, and see how we can work together. I would be remiss if I didn't do a shout out to all of the public officials. You all are doing heroes work. You know, you've got a servant heart and we appreciate it. We know in today's day and age how difficult, more difficult that position is than ever. You know, with access to, to social media and a lot of people with a lot of opinions, with loud voices over, over the, you know, the internet. Just stay the course. Know that you're, you're doing what you're doing because you believe and care about our community. And we look forward to partnering with all of you as, as you, as you need us. So thank you for your public service. For anybody who didn't get a question answered, we will get those to Jeff and/or any other appropriate individual and share with him the chat. There were some really nice comments going on if, if you didn't get a chance to see them. Just a couple of quick notes about the chamber. We do hope to begin to get back to some sort of a normalcy by offering some limited in-person events with, with virtual op, you know, options for those that are still not comfortable coming out. We know we have to be a leader in getting, you know, confidence and people back, looking at each other and talking to each other. We'll only do that in a safe environment. Please join us on January 27th at four o'clock for the first part of our annual meeting. Is, most of you know who are on the line, we typically have 700 of our closest friends together, having dinner and networking and getting great entertainment. While we can't do that right now, the first part of our, our virtual annual meeting will be entertaining. It'll be informational and it'll be an opportunity for us to come together as, as a business community. What we'll promise you is that when we can do this safely in 2021, we're going to bring you all together for the fun part of our annual meeting. So join in. It won't be boring. We have some celebrity guest appearances. Just go to our website, daytonachamber.com on the homepage and you can register. Thank you for your time. We look forward to working with all of you in 2021. We're here and we're available. Appreciate all of you. Have a great day.